We now call to order a meeting of the Wunsackit School Committee for Wednesday, December 19th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now take a roll call. Mr. Bourget.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Nado.
Yes.
I will now accept nominations for a chairperson of the Wunsackit School Committee.
Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Paul Bourget as chairperson of the Wunsackit School Committee.
Second.
Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. I will now take a roll call for the nomination of Mr. Paul Bourget as chairperson of the Wunsackit School Committee. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Nado?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Bourget.
Thank you. Glad for your time. (APPLAUSE). Thank you all. I will now accept nominations for a vice-chairperson of the Wunsackit School Committee. I nominate Mr. Donald G. Burke as vice-chairman of the Wunsackit School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other names that you know of nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. Now we'll have a roll call vote to approve Mr. Donald G. Burke as vice-chairman of the Wunsackit School Committee. Miss Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Nado?
Yes.
And I say yes. Congratulations.[166.12][166.12](APPLAUSE). So again, it's a good and welfare. I know we have a great audience out here, folks at home. I can tell you this team is really working hard and we'll do our best for our children, for our teachers, for our parents, and for all the citizens of the city. Keep us in your prayers, keep us in your thoughts, so that we can do the best job possible. Before we get into Good and Welfare, I believe for the Vernon Heights Elementary School, have a presentation to make, Mr. DeRosa.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Rob DeRosa, I'm the principal at Vernon Heights Elementary School. I'm proud to bring two teachers with me today, Deb Piett and Tiffany Goulet. They are going to do a presentation on their experience with BOX. BOX is an exercise program, fitness program, that we do three times a week, and they're going to come up and tell you all their experiences that they've been dealing with for the last year. So, guys, come on up here.
Good evenings. So today I come with you, we have my fifth grade students Tiffany and I, just Goulet and I, we do the BOX program at Vernon Heights on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we've kind of changed the mantra of what the program is about. Usually it was a program that we offered at the school for children that wanted to be active and learn about health and wellness. But I kind of got to start thinking that we should make it more than that. It should be something that they earned, a program that they should be proud about being part of, and it kind of became something, it took a mind of its own, and we have some of the students here from fifth grade, like I said, and they're here to talk about why they feel BOX is important to them and what their favorite part about BOX. And what's great is that Vernon, I have a lot of students that walk up and say, "Oh, I can't wait to be part of that program," because I'm actually kind of enjoying the liaison with the teachers. I look for the students who are using the three R's that our school represents, respect, responsible, and ready to learn. So these are students that are in school on a regular basis, they're ready to learn, they respect the school themselves and the staff, and their great leaps are not building. And I'm really proud of the students that are here today because they display that in so many ways, and they're a little nervous, and I understand, and I told them I'm with them. But again, I want them to know sincerely from the bottom of my heart how proud I am because a lot of them have made such great leaps throughout the program and the few weeks that we've been together. Tomorrow will be our last morning for the fall session, where we meet for 12 weeks. And I cannot say, and being that they're fifth graders, I know soon they will leave us for the middle school, but they have definitely left an impression so far, and they set a very great example for the younger students that are in the program of what is expected. So I just wanted to let them know in front of everybody how proud I am of you guys.[352.22][352.22](APPLAUSE).
My name is Daisy Ball.
Why do you like my favorite part about BOX?
My favorite part about BOX is having fun and playing games.
And why do you think BOX is important?
BOX is important because... ...exercising and getting ready for the day.
Awesome. Good job reading. Good job.[391.84][391.84](APPLAUSE).
BOX is important because it makes you healthy.
What's your favorite part? The game. Awesome.
My favorite part about BOX is that you want to... I think it's important because it's more often than less.
Good job.
Friends will make... I think BOX is important because it gets you ready for the morning, you stay healthy. My favorite part about BOX is having fun and playing with friends.
Good job.[448.44][448.44](APPLAUSE).
My favorite part about BOX is having fun. One of your guys, my favorite part about BOX is doing different things every day and having fun. I think BOX is important because exercising and having so much fun.
I have to say, I know I'm going to embarrass him, but I have to because I feel it's... This is Angel. Angel here is like, he's one of our superstars at school. He's come a long way, and in this program, I just simply have to, he's done an amazing job, and he's changed quite a bit, and he's become a leader, and sometimes people don't think, it's starting kids I want, but he definitely has shined to the occasion, and he's helped out a lot, so I'm very, very proud of him and what he's done. So, and I know I just embarrassed him a lot, but... What do you like about BOX? And why do you think BOX is important? He really took this seriously. He actually wrote it all out, and his teacher typed it out for him, so he was very prepared. You can read it right off of there. So why do you think BOX is important? Awesome. All right, so that's our BOX grant.
Welcome any one of you on a Tuesday or Thursday morning to come over and exercise.
Yes, please, bring your sneakers already.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Great job. At this time, I ask if anyone would like to address the school committee, please come to the microphone and audium, and just state your name and address, please, for the record.
We are junior National Honor Society officers from the Wunsackit High School. I'm Ms. Holly DiCapone, and I am the National Honor Society President. My name is Maureen Chatzavon, and I am a Public Relations Officer.
My name is Eric Lu, and I'm also a Public Relations Officer.
We are here to represent the entire National Honor Society. I do formally invite each school committee member to the Underclassmen National Honor Society induction ceremony. I'll now pass the light to Eric for a minute.
So the Underclassmen induction ceremony will take place on Thursday, January 24th, 2019, beginning at 6:30 PM at Wunsackit High School Auditorium. Freshments will follow.
We hope to see you all at this wonderful event. Now may we please approach the committee to hand out your answers.
Please, please do. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
My name is Michelle Mariola. I reside at Wunsackit. I am a mother of twin boys who are juniors at Wunsackit High School. I am a proud teacher of the city of Wunsackit. I would like to welcome all the newly elected school committee members, and welcome back Mr. Bourget. I have spoken at many meetings lately, both in front of the school committee and in the city council. I have also worn this blue shirt more times than I can count. But tonight, I'd like to ask, I'd like to take a different approach in light of the holiday season, and before I do, and some of them already have, thank you, I would like to ask my brothers and sisters to stand beside me as I recite this poem. 'Twas the week before Christmas in all through Wunsackit. No parents nor teachers had more in their pockets. The raises they sought seemed so far in the distance. Though they worked hard for years, they still faced resistance. Their students were taught and loved just the same. Yet they felt disrespected, and to meetings they came. A mayor elected despite our concern, left all of us wondering, "When is our turn?" She said there's no money for teachers and staff, while at our expense she had a great laugh. Throughout the city, more contracts were settled, though she claimed that she didn't in negotiations she meddled. I gave them my best, and they shot it down. I offered them zero, so what's with the frowns? So now we elected a new school committee. We hope and we pray that they care for the city. Fight for more funding to do our jobs right, so we're not reliving the same senseless plight. All that we ask for is what we deserve. We've put in the time and generated reserve. We can't spare the taxpayers all on our backs. It isn't our fault that the funding's been lax. It's now up to you, our promising members. We've given back plenty if no one remembers. On Ellie, on Don, Lynn, Rebecca, and Paul, go back to the table and fight for us all. We stand here before you instead of our tree. We stand here united in solidarity. We'll leave you with this, our final request. Teachers, parents, and students deserve only your best. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
Hello, my name is Chris Moschant, 37, Meadow Road, Wunsackit. I'm here just to congratulate all the newly elected school committee members, and I wish you all the best. I know how challenging it is to be an elected official, and I really appreciate the first words out of the chairman that we need all your prayers and thoughts, and I think that's a very apropos ask, because it is very difficult to sit in those chairs that you're in. I wasn't going to say too much more, but in light of what I just heard, I don't think that's in the best spirit of Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moschant. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Hearing none, we will go on to recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to all of Wunsackit High School and Wunsackit area career and technical center debaters who attended the second All Division Rhode Island Urban Debate League Tournament in Providence recently. Wunsackit sent 16 debaters to the tournament, the most of any league school. Wunsackit won speaker or team awards in JV and varsity divisions. In varsity, Kyle Roberts went to the finals round and placed on the second-place team for the tournament. Alex Braden placed second in speaker points for the varsity division. The Wunsackit team also showed remarkable success in JV division, where most Wunsackit debaters were debating JV for the first time, sweeping the first-place to third-place team awards. Caleb Calori and Kara Rich took first-place team while Jeffrey Marr, in debating without his partner, placed second. The team of Azira Rivera and Magda Wabi rounded out the team effort, taking third-place team. Magda also took third-place speaker in the JV speaker awards. Hillary Philamong, a varsity debater, took the Revolutionary Thinker Special Award for her creative approach to argumentation. Congratulations to all of Wunsackit High School and Wunsackit area career and technical center debaters. Go Nobens! On December 5th and 6th, Wunsackit area career and technical center was represented at the Junior Achievement of Rhode Island Career Exploration Initiative by sending all 10 programs along with C-Space. JA Inspire two-day event is a statewide effort to provide all eighth graders in Rhode Island the opportunity for career exploration. This year, over 4,680 eighth-grade students passed through the halls of the convention center for this two-day event. The WACTC sent 50-plus students each day to man the 10 20-foot tables, providing hands-on experience for the eighth graders. The unsolicited email from the Department of Education is just one testament to the impact and impression that our students made on the eighth graders and adults in attendance. The Rhode Island Association for Education of Young Children, United Way of Rhode Island, and Rhode Island Kid Town organized a special statewide reading event called Supers Read to Young Children. This event took place from October 29th through November 16th for superintendents to read to infants and toddlers enrolled in local childcare and early head start programs. The goal for this event was to highlight the importance of reading to children as early and often as possible to promote school readiness. On November 14th, I had the privilege of reading to infants and toddlers at the Wunsackit YWCA, and I got to tell you, it was a great, great opportunity. I loved it. The kids were phenomenal, and the staff there were phenomenal. Congratulations to the Wunsackit High School band and chorus, as well as their teachers, Lisa Els and Chris Depot, on a wonderful holiday concert performance this past Thursday, December 13th, at the Wunsackit High School Auditorium. They did a wonderful job. I was there, and every year they just do a tremendous job, so congratulations to them. And lastly, I'd like to take this time to wish everyone a very happy and safe holiday. Friday's our last day of school before our winter break, and we will be returning to school on January 2nd, which is a Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Dr. McGee. Does any school committee member have any comments with regard to the recognitions and announcements?
Mr. Chairman? I just want to add to Dr. McGee's comments about the holiday concert. Mrs. Kepiscus and I were there that evening as well, and I am struck every year I go by the amount of students, the great talent that they have, and obviously the great direction by Mr. Depot, this is out, this is out, and I'm always struck by, they always will select something different. I mean, you hear so many Christmas concerts, but cool to them, they always select something different, and I leave there thinking about that special new song that they had contributed. So I just wanted to add to your congratulations to them.
Is there anyone else? I want to say, I want to add to what Vice Chair Burke said. I've been on, I'm beginning my fourth year in the school committee, it seems every single meeting, we do have recognitions of some of our students who excel in so many ways, and so congratulations to all our kids, all our students who continue to show that Wunsackit is really a journey. I would like to have a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, we will go on to the approval of the minutes for the open meeting that was held on November 21st. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections, deletions? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Stay.
Mrs. Capwell?
Stay.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Stay.
Mrs. Nado?
Stay.
Thank you. Your minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would like to have a motion to approve and discuss the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Still no.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any school committee member that would like to take any item out of the consent agenda, out of order, to discuss any items we have? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Nado?
Yes.
We have no communications? We have some, some of part of our consent agenda, we've had some folks that are sitting here who were appointed tonight, certified and non-certified positions. For those who are here, would you please stand and let us recognize you and congratulate you? And also congratulate those who could not be here unless tonight. Next, we go to conferences and discussions, communications among the district students, parents, guardians. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kepiscus.
I always said if I got up here, I was going to pull the mic closer so you could hear me, because I would be there if you couldn't hear out there. I brought this onto the agenda because it's a concern that I've been expressing, especially with regard to special ed students that are in out-of-district placements, but to all special ed students, as a matter of fact, there's a lack of communication from the district in particular to the out-of-district students. They're almost treated as if they're not Wunsackit students, they're not part of GoGo Classroom, they're not part of Skyward. So as a result, I, as a parent, for example, am not informed when there's a FAFSA night at the high school, or when there's a change to the portfolio for graduation. I learned about that at a PEP meeting, just because I happened to be there, and I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that this is a problem, and it's an ongoing problem. I've been about the special ed for 12 years, and it's been ongoing all that time, and I just couldn't miss the opportunity where we had everyone in the room to mention it and hopefully get people talking about it so that we can try to resolve it, because situations like, the biggest example to me recently was the portfolio change that wasn't communicated to the out-of-district schools who were still working on an 18-piece paper binder. That's significant, and it's unfair to the students to not have that communicated to them, to their teachers, and to their parents. So I'm hoping going forward, we can develop some sort of system where we are kept in the loop, and those other parents and guardians are similarly kept in the loop, and that special education and the district as a whole can communicate more efficiently. Thank you.
Any school committee member who would like to address the comments, the discussion that Mrs. Kepiscus just had?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nado?
I would like to know how many students you're talking about.
It's my understanding that we have approximately 80 students right now that we're concerned with in out-of-district. I realize it's not a significant number, but to those students and their families, it is significant. Any student left out of the loop is significant. Granted, when you consider we have 6,000 students, is 80 that huge? No, but when you have 18 graduating this year to whom that portfolio requirement hasn't been communicated, that's a problem.
Okay, are these parents invited to meetings?
They are invited to C-Lab meetings.
Okay.
But I was the C-Lab chair until December 4th, when I was sworn into this committee. I was unaware of the portfolio change. I learned of that at the PEP meeting, I think shortly before the inauguration. At that point, I was still the C-Lab chair, I believe, for nine more days, and I was wholly unaware of the change in the portfolio. And I have a son who's in an out-of-district placement, and I can tell you as a matter of fact, no communications were received from me, none ever received from me, by me from the district. I don't get the phone blasts, I don't get emails, I don't get mailings, I don't get anything, and that's a problem. I've been discussing it, for example, my son is a straight A student, he's never been asked to join the honor society, and I don't understand why, and that's something that we each remember, these are still your students. They're entitled to participate in sports, in band, in chorus, and go to proms, and be in the yearbook, participate in the honor society, and know this change to the graduation requirements. I would hope not, but I can tell you that I've been discussing it for a long time.
I will tell you on the way upstairs. Okay, well, you got my support. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Dr. McGee, what do we do about this?
So, Mr. Chairman, I've had some many conversations with Mrs. Kepiscus, Dr. Sullivan, and I had conversations with her about it. Mr. Natariani has also had some conversations with Mrs. Kepiscus about how we include the students, the families of the students that are in our out-of-district placements. We have, across the district, we have about 153 students that are out of district. Those students that this would directly affect are, as you said, about 18 or so who are seniors, and then even juniors are going to need to be made aware. In addition, we're going to need to make the ninth graders aware, because that's when they're starting to collect the artifacts in their portfolio. What Mr. Natariani is working on, inputting the information of those parents and those families into the school messenger platform, which we use, each of our schools uses this platform, to communicate to parents via email, via robo-calls, and things like that as well.
Now, I just have a question for you. First of all, I love a list of the out-of-district students and where they're placed. Now, my question is, and I don't know what's happening the last five years, if students are placed in a facility, and I don't even know which facilities you're using, how long they use, are any of them mainstreamed back into Wunsackit Education Department?
So the goal is ultimately to bring as many students back into the Wunsackit schools as possible. Students are placed in out-of-district settings for a variety of reasons. It can be, you know, academic reasons, it can be, in a lot of instances, it's behavioral. So we try to, when we can, bring them back into the district, because as you all know, it's very costly when you have students in out-of-district placements. So, you know, anytime they're successful enough in their out-of-district placement to come back into the Wunsackit Education Department, we try to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file Mrs. Kepiscus's report. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to move out of order the school committee subcommittees ahead of the Health and Wellness Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
School committee, next item is the school committee subcommittees. You have in your packet three items, the members of the subcommittees as they stand. We have school committee appointments for this year, and definition of the subcommittees. In addition to the regular bi-monthly meetings, each member of the school committee, and I know how it was many years ago, Mrs. Nado, but we, members of the school committee are asked to select at least two subcommittees, and if you were... And if you would send those to me as soon as you can, then I can reach out to you and then I can make, we can make replacements. I'll make the placements. I also, we also included in your file a description of what each subcommittee is about, what, what they are tasked with doing and what the goals are of each subcommittee. So I would ask you, each one of us, to put together, put your first, you know, number of them, one and two. If you want three, go right ahead. Let's see what we come up with. But as soon as I have your wants, your desires, we'll assign the subcommittees. The subcommittee work is very, very important to the school committee because a lot of the items that come before us in our agendas come from the work of the subcommittees. So it's very important. In addition to that, I've added two items, liaison to the special, to the C-LAC and liaison to the parent advisory council. I understand that this was in effect years ago and I'd like to bring that back because I think it's very important, as Mrs. Kapiskas noted, oftentimes our special ed students somehow, the communications don't, the communications doesn't get to the parents, to them, or whatever. We need to keep everybody in the loop. Also, the PAC is very important because a lot of information, a lot of things that need to be done come from the PAC. And so the school committee should be well aware of what's going on so we can deal with issues on a timely basis. So all of that hopefully will be addressed when we do this. So hopefully before the end of the year, you will send me, as soon as you can, send me your, your choices and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nado?
Are you, are you asking to assign one person to each subcommittee or two?
We, we can put two people on each subcommittee.
Yeah, it's a tradition.
We can't have three because we violate all the laws.
Absolutely, but there were two only, some was ill and there are only three coverage.
Now, all members of these subcommittees are voting, from what I understand. Is that correct? Ms. Rappo?
Every member of the subcommittee, including the non-committee members, you have constituents.
All of them.
Operate as a committee and all have the same rights and privileges to vote and establish a forum and so forth.
Excellent. And so we will do that and in our package, you will see the names of the folks who have been serving on the subcommittees, so it gives us an idea. And there are some other people, I know that have been interested in taking part in the subcommittee. I open it up to you. If any of you there are interested, let me know and we will get back to you. I'd like to have a motion to, before we do that, I want to go back to Mr. Burke. That's the next item on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm going to remove my item because in my excitement to try to bring back the health and wellness committee, I think I've been a little premature. So I think I will wait until the next meeting. If for your goodness you allow me to be named to this committee, then I, I will have some more comments to say about the health and wellness.
Chairman, Vice Chair Burke, there's no doubt you're going to be on that committee.
That's okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. May I have a motion to receive and place on file the school committee reports in this, in this section? I'll take the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be sending an email to, I'd like to hopefully get it from you. Know later in January 4th, your selections for these subcommittees. Next, we will go to the next section, which is the fiscal update. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to defer to Mr. Perrier. Mr. Per, Mr. Perrier has put together a memo outlining the financial highlights. Mr. Perrier?
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Thank you, Wensucket School Committee. We have two documents in front of you. We have a memo, a memo for me and an Excel spreadsheet that gives a fiscal update for our general fund. I'm going to step through this at the high level, my memo. At any time anybody asks questions, feel free to jump in and answer them, answer them as we go. Also, if there's anything that you would like to see going forward, just feel free to reach out to me. My door's open and I'm willing to discuss anything financial at any time. So let's begin first with the Excel spreadsheet. I'd like to draw your attention to the roll-up tab. There's two tabs on here. One is a roll-up and one is a more detailed expenditure report. The bottom line says, right now, we're anticipating a surplus of $12,331 for the year. That's, that's not exactly true because what you have in here is a fund transfer in to cover overages of medical this year in the amount of $1.17 million. So basically, right now, we are in a $1.17 million deficit position and that's projected through the end of the year, June 30th. Now, let's, let's jump into the memo and we can touch on some of the highlights of what's going on. On the revenue side, currently, all the revenues are projected to be on target, other than two categories. The two categories that I'm referring to are rental income, which is currently about, looking to be $88,000 ahead of budget. At the end of last year, we changed our accounts receivable system so we're able to effectively capture more revenue the way we billed before. There was actually some, some loss in terms of the revenue we were collecting because it wasn't being tracked. We now keep track of it in our accounting system so we're able to follow up to make sure that all the billings that we do for building rentals are collected on. The other item that I'd like to point out on the revenue side is Medicaid revenue. Due to some increases in Medicaid spending this year, we're looking to pull in about $167,000 more in Medicaid revenue this year. And we'll talk about those expenditures on the expenditure side here. And also, just a note again, I have transferred one point, I haven't transferred, but I, I put a transfer on the books to balance this out of $1.17 million. The next meeting, I will put together a packet for you so that you can see exactly what, you'll be approving that at the next meeting. This is really just a placeholder at the time so that I can balance the budget. And we'll talk about fund balances a little bit further down as well, about what we actually have in our reserves. On the expenditure side, currently, our regular salaries are $1.32 million under budget. And the main reason for that is when I built the budget last year for this fiscal year, I was anticipating having some contracts finalized by now. So because that's not happened, we still are showing a surplus on the expense side for regular salaries. And at this time, I'm able to even encumber money because we really don't have a way to identify what that number will be at this time. Currently, our medical expenses are $1.5 million over budget. It's been a pretty tough year for medical. We've had quite a, not just only a high number of claims, but also high-dollar claims. Now, to kind of pull the trap back on medical a little bit, we do have stop-loss insurance and it caps out at $250,000. So as soon as a claim hits $250,000, the stop-loss will kick in. But we have had numerous claims this year hit that mark. And for claims, you're looking at a million dollars right there. So the hope, I think going forward, that this, this projection is going to improve based on a few factors that we've been reviewing. But at this time, we're on pace for $1.5 million over budget. Now, when I talk about these, again, to kind of back, when I talk about what we're on pace for, I, I projected June 30th. So we're not just $1.5 million over budget right this minute. I look forward, we project out what we've done based on past experience and also that goes for everything on the expenditure and revenue level. We project it all through June 30th. So this is what we're looking at, at the close of the fiscal year right now. Again, the hope is that this deficit is actually going to go down and I'm confident that it will. And I think we've had a really poor run on medical. I feel, I feel pretty good that it will go down, that things will improve going forward, but that's tough to, that's tough to bank on.
Well, that's like the weather.
Yeah, precisely.
You can't really determine when someone gets sick.
Just, yeah, just kind of looking at historically what's happened here. Been here for four years now. This is by far the worst six-month stretch that I've ever seen, without a doubt. Due to the overage of medical expense, right now, I don't have an encumbrance for our OPEP transfer. Now, OPEP stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits and this is money that we set aside for retirement medical. We have an investment account that we put the money into Vanguard invested for us and then so we get a return on it. But right now, because of that medical overage, I'm not anticipating us making that transfer at this time. So I'm holding off on covering that $525,000 because basically it's going to be covering the overage on medical as it is right now. To go a little further down, getting out of the employee salaries and benefits portion, currently, our out-of-district tuitions are $1.15 million over budget. We've just had more additions on out-of-district than we originally anticipated back when this budget was built. I've been, I'm in constant, constant contact with the Special Education Department and they are always working to try to bring students back. This is, Nado touched on it a little bit earlier. They're always working on bringing students back, so again, but you don't know who's going to walk through that door the next day. So again, we just keep track of this, keep the POs up to date and we close them out as soon as students leave so that we have an accurate number month over month on this.
Before we get out of medical, you know, we talked about medical, Mr. Perrier?
Yes.
Didn't you, based on our discussions previously, go through and go back to all the bills, all the medical bills to make sure?
Absolutely.
That we weren't double-billed, wrongly-billed, et cetera?
We actually, in the finance department, we pulled every claim from July 1st through last week. We compiled it and we verified, we cross-checked it with our employee records for people on medical. It was a bit of a prayer to maybe we could find some missed billings. I think I found one missed billing, $600 bucks. So we're, we're looking to straighten that out now, but unfortunately, that really, really doesn't help us out. So we're, we're going to continue to keep an eye on that going forward and again, kind of pray for the best. Again, I've encumbered it out at the current pace we are, so even if we continue to have a bad year, I kind of feel like $1.5 is about as bad as it's going to get. But again, it's pay-as-you-go. We, I don't know what the bill's going to be next week. This isn't like being with the Rhode Island Air Local Trust where they set a rate for family plans and, and single at the beginning of the year. So July 1st, I'm going to know exactly what my medical expenses at the end of the year, plus or minus a few people changing plans. Every week, I get a bill directly from Blue Cross outlining what the claims were for that week. So one week I'll get a bill that says $150,000, the next week I'll get a bill that says $450,000. It's just that kind of variance week to week that makes projecting this very difficult. So we talked about out-of-districts briefly. Transportation, transportation is on pace to be $585,000 over budget and this kind of goes hand in hand with the increase in out-of-district tuitions. Because we're sending more students out of district for the tuitions, we're paying for more busing through the state to get that done. So overall, once we factor in the additional pickup for Medicaid revenue and rental income, we're looking at about a $1.17 million deficit. And right now, I'm proposing to draw that money from our medical reserve. If you look at the end of our memo, I included fund balances as of November 30th, 2018. These actually have our un-audited numbers from fiscal 18 in here. I just recently received the final audit adjustments for fiscal year 18 and there's some very minor things that are not going to have a significant impact on what you're looking at today. But when that audit gets wrapped up, I will certainly update these fund balances to make any changes, to include any changes that happen to, to those audit adjustments. On our general fund unrestricted, we have about $4.4 million in unrestricted revenue. Our OPEP reserve account is $1.15 million. Now, a portion of that, about $700,000 of that, is currently invested in the OPEP trust. That's the money that we have invested with our Vanguard account through the Rhode Island Air Local Trust. The remainder of that is just sitting on the balance sheet. It was not moved into the trust because early in the year, we knew we were going to have some medical overages based on the early returns. So I made the decision not to lock that away in the trust because I thought we may need to draw on that. Our medical tooling account, $1.8 million. That's just a reserve on our balance sheet on the medical tooling account that we're able to draw on. I'm going to suggest that we take that $1.17 million out of that $1.8 billion number because I have not factored in that deduction. So really, that's going to cut our medical tooling account down quite significantly. We also have two other accounts, a building capital account and a technology account. Our building capital account has approximately $1.1 million on it at this time and our technology account has $626,000 in change in it at this time. And finally, we elected, the city elected to purchase our Career Tech Center. I don't know if you were up to speed on that. The school department was paid $3.15 million to take that account over, or take that school over. We have done various things to it. We can kind of recap that at a later date, but we've done a roof, we've done ceiling tile projects, we've done lighting projects. We've done quite a significant amount of work. Currently, we still have $610,000 left of that $3.15 million to spend. So that's kind of reserved for Career Tech. We're really not, we need to spend that in Career Tech. And the reason why we need to get through that money is as soon as we're spent through that, any capital products we do in Career Tech afterwards will be reimbursed for. And that actually goes for the building capital account as well. That $1.1 million really represents more along the lines of $10 million to the district because we basically reimburse 90% of any expense that we have. We run through school building authority around. So that $1.1 million is really set aside to take advantage of the bond issue that was just recently passed through Rhode Island. So we'll get some products done and get reimbursed at a very, very good rate. So I know there's going to be a building committee that's going to talk about that a little bit, one of our subcommittees. So we're going to get into the planning phase of that and how to spend that money. So that's, that's kind of the November 28 fiscal update in a nutshell, I guess. Does anybody have any questions or any comments on it?
Mrs. Nado?
Okay, what was the original medical allocation in this current budget?
That's on here. The original allocation was eight, a little over $8 million, $8 million, eight, and eight, $8,809.
And do you issue monthly financial reports?
Yes, I, I don't issue them in July and August just because it's so early in the year and it's really tough to really make any heads or tails. But going from September forward, I will present an update just like this or any other format you'd like to see. I break it down by uniform chart accounts. We break it down by object code. I feel that that's the best, the best indicator as to what we're spending, spending our resources on. But yeah, I like to issue a memo of a memo and a fiscal update once a month.
Okay. Before it was done, very simply, you had the total allocation and of the budget originally and then you had the minuses each month and then it was a running totals. So it was very easy to understand.
Okay.
And you know when you were going to get in trouble because you could see it.
Yeah, yeah. So you'd like, we could just go month over month, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I kind of like that. I don't know why, but it kind of worked for me. Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of had a handle on it because of that.
Okay, yeah.
So you were no surprises except if something really went wrong because it's done in the past, but.
Yeah, we could certainly kind of like compare it month over month so you can kind of see how things are moving as we go forward. I think we could do like a two or a three-month trail on that just to kind of see how things have developed month over month. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thanks.
So get a better visualization on that.
What we do now, it seems, you know, Mrs. Nado, I think it's a good idea. But when I look at the financials we have now, we have our budget, we have our actuals as of that period, which is cumulative. If you have numbers month to month to month, what we need to know, that's great. But we show the actuals and we show what's encumbered. Whatever's encumbered is what you're adding, that, that's, that's the next column, which is the projection. That's what we expect that might happen at the end of the year. But since we've got six, seven months to go, it's tough to tell, especially on the, some accounts are easy because they're the same amount, same cost. because they're the same amount, same force.
Yes, I agree, I realize that.
When we get to medical, that's, that's just a crapshoot. We don't know what in the world is going to happen. But we show the projection and the over and unders each and every month. So we can look from one month to another, where did it go, where's that total? So that we can really estimate where we're going. The one thing that I liked with what Mr. Perrier does is he makes sure that we stay encumbered on our expenses. If things are looking well, well, no, let's just get rid of the rest. We don't, we keep it to budget so that just in case something happens, we're not going to be caught short. That's where the difference is, I think maybe what we do today, what we started years ago, we were caught short. You see every single month what the projected deficit surplus is by account. And I think this has worked very well for the committee.
But I mean, whatever works, as long as we have some, I don't know.
Once, you know, and again, you know, I've been looking at these numbers now well for three years, and this is what I do, I just help the numbers. But once you look at it and really dig in, maybe we can take a look at it, see what we really want, what we need. And Mr. Perrier is, can prepare any reports we need. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, Chairman, so I think that there is a way to get the best of both roles with this level of detail in the background and then some sort of summary page, even though, so I really appreciate the memo that you could also be together and watch through, but I think that there might also be a way to get, if you know, what she's looking for.
Sure.
Well, I would love to share what I've used in the past for a similar role.
That's fine, that's great. Any other thoughts or comments? If none?
I actually, I have a question.
Yes, please.
So aside from the, the medical numbers, was there anything else in the data that surprised you? Anything in like, that you're seeing in the half a million dollar range that was potentially older that was surprising more?
I, I think, I think I touched on all of the real large variances through the memo. I think everything else is, is pretty much within reason of what I expected to see year over year, not really. I mean, of course, you're going to have variances from line to line, but nothing else really shocking at this, at this moment in time. Again, it's, just to kind of give you a taste of medical, I mean, we're projected to be $9.5 million in expenses for medical this year. Last year, we were $6.6 million. So I mean, that's almost a $3 million swing on an $8 million budget, which is, this is insane. So I mean, that's a huge, huge swing over something that technically shouldn't really have changed that much year over year. So when we prepared the budget for this fiscal year, we actually got a little more aggressive with our budgeting of medical. We were able to, we knew we were setting aside money in this medical pooling account, and we knew we had the OPEB reserve to draw on in case we got into a little bit of trouble. And of course, the one, the minute you take it back is, is when it comes up to bite you, and that's, that's really what happened here. Just that, I mean, I think that $3 million spread year over year, I, I don't think we're going to end at 9.5, I really don't. I, I think, again, I've kind of dug into it pretty deeply, and I think there's some things coming down the road that are going to help us out in terms of some stop loss, in terms of some changes happening on the medical plans themselves. So I think we will do better on that. But whenever I prepare these projections, I kind of prepare us for the worst and hope for the best. I don't really like to get caught short. As we go through the year, you're going to watch our salary number slightly increase because the way that we prepare it is I'm encumbering all of the salaries, even for open positions, every time I do an update. And we never, we always have open positions, so you're always going to see a little pickup there. And so that's kind of my philosophy for doing this is, again, let's, let's look at the worst-case scenario here and then go forward from there.
Any other comments? If we're none, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the fiscal update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one finished business, no one's new business. Need a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of Special Education Chairperson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recommend Ms. Lauren Windsor for the position of Special Education Chairperson. Ms. Windsor has an extensive background servicing students with special needs. She graduated from Rhode Island College with a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary and special education. Ms. Windsor has more than 12 years of experience working with children and youth with educational, social, emotional, and behavioral issues. She's worked in both public and private sectors as a pass worker, a paraprofessional, a special education teacher, and special education coordinator. Her experience across a variety of settings has provided her with direct knowledge of the programs and services across educational and behavioral continuums, both in and out of districts. In her previous position as a special education teacher, Ms. Windsor was responsible for developing, implementing, and monitoring the educational program for all students under case load. In that position, she worked with students with severe, profound developmental challenges. She also provided assistance to other staff members in resolving problems, maintained educational records, and conducted educational evaluations of students. As the Special Education Coordinator for the past three and a half years, Ms. Windsor participated in the training of special education teachers and paraprofessionals in the areas of curriculum, employment first, alternate assessment, and transition services. She coordinated staffing based on student needs and observed and evaluated teachers. Based on her record accomplishments, I highly recommend Ms. Windsor for the position of Special Education Chairperson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee. Any, I don't, any school committee member have any discussion comments?
Chairman, I just have a question.
Sure.
Okay. When you say Special Education Chairperson, do you mean the director?
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
Yes, no, not the director. So this position is within the structure of the Special Education Department. We have the director, we have the assistant director, and then we have chairpersons which oversee each of the levels. So this person would oversee high school level. We have another position that we're going to be looking to fill soon that oversee the elementary level. And we have someone currently that oversees the middle school level. So this is just sort of someone that would fall below the assistant director and would oversee the, the Special Education Department at the high school.
Okay. Is that a concept, or is, does it seem like it's always existed?
It's, well, when, when we, when we looked at the, the Special Education administrative restructuring in the district a few years ago, this was one of the areas of need that we found is that the director, and, and at the time, we didn't have an assistant director, the director's responsibility was, was really to sort of do a lot of the, the oversight across the district. So by adding these positions, it provides a layer of support and oversight at each of the element, the elementary, middle, and high school levels.
Okay. So they are, it is different, the structure has changed?
It has changed, yes. That's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, but yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is this the first time this position has been built in this new restructuring?
In, in the new restructuring, this is it, yes. So this, when, when the, when the committee approved the restructuring a while ago, this position was posted, but we had difficulty filling it with somebody who was qualified. So we finally found some qualified candidates, and we're very excited to, to hopefully welcome Ms. Windsor this evening.
Anyone else? Roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Morge.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Windsor here.
She is, she's right there.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of the Project Director for Project Aware. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Oh.
You made a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
All roll call.
No.
No.
No motion?
Isn't, Dr. McGee?
Ready for me? Okay, I'm going to go for it. I would like to recommend Mr. Kevin Lammerow for the position of Project Director for Project Aware. Mr. Lammerow has an extensive background providing support to students with behavioral issues and ensuring they receive the education and resources needed to thrive. He graduated from Rhode Island College with a Bachelor of Psychology and obtained his Master's in Social Work. Mr. Lammerow has more than six years of experience working with students with educational, social, emotional, and behavioral issues. He has worked in both public and private sectors as a social worker, education policy intern, behavior interventionist consultant, and art mentor, and a social worker attendance officer. His experience across a variety of settings has provided him with direct knowledge of the programs and services across educational and behavioral continuums, both in and out of districts. In his previous position as behavior interventionist consultant, Mr. Lammerow provided social and emotional support to students with behavioral issues, built positive relationships with students, and helped them deal with difficult conflicts and crises in the classroom. He also assisted the students in developing a more effective way of communicating and encouraged positive choices in the classroom and the community. Mr. Lammerow joined the Wausau Education Department in 2018 as a social worker attendance officer. He worked hard to develop and maintain relationships with the community, provide assistance and information for alternate, alternative learning opportunities for students and worked with school personnel to improve student attendance. Mr. Lammerow will be joining the Project Aware District team along with Mr. Christopher Hord implementing comprehensive socio, socio-emotional programming in Wausau. Based on his record of accomplishments and extensive background in both special education and social work, I highly recommend Mr. Lammerow for the position of Project Director for Project Aware. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion, comments, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Two questions. Are we, are we now down a local worker?
So, so Mr. Lammerow was, Mr. Lammerow took over from Mr. Barnes, C M Barnes, who retired at the end of last year. So we are currently in the process of looking to fill that position. So Mr. Lammerow served as one of two attendance officers here in the district. Roger Bider is the other attendance officer. So we are currently, the, the position has been posted on school spring, we're looking at Iowa.
My second question, Mr. Chairman, is no salary is, has that been decided?
I, it, it has. Now, this, this is not coming out of local funds, this is coming out of a grant that we received over a market.
Okay.
So this, yeah, I, I apologize for there not being a salary there.
I'll take that.
Yeah. But this is, this is not locally funded.
It's not locally funded.
This is through.
Anyone else, Mr. Chairman? Mrs. Kepiscus.
Could you tell us a little bit more about what Project Aware is?
Sure, I'm going to let Dr. Remka describe what Project Aware is. So I can start by saying that Wausau was one of the three communities that received this grant. The Department of Education and D C Y F were looking at piloting this, this, this mental health opportunity in the district to work and support, support students and families. And we were awarded the grant, they, they provided the grant to the, to three of the urban cores. And we were one of the three, with Dr. Remka, who's been working with Project Aware. Can you describe a little more?
So the grant is actually came from SAMSHA. It's a Substantive Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration. We received a three to four-year grant, it really depends on, you know, the amount of grant. We received $360,000 for at least three years. Within the grant, we will have, which is the project director, project director and myself, and we will put together a district team to work on policy, develop a comprehensive socio-emotional program to support our students. And we also have a program instructor who will start a program at the elementary level first. And throughout three years, we're going to develop K through 12 comprehensive socio-emotional program.
Thank you, that's kind of what I was concerned with. I was wondering if it was K through 12 or if it was K through a particular age, thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to have a motion to receive and place on file. Roll call, that's true, roll call.
Chairman Morge.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow here? Next, we'll have the superintendent's report, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So periodically, I come to the, to the school committee and I provide a committee with updates on our enrollment census, summary report. The last time I made this presentation to the school committee and to the community was when we received our, when we submitted our October 1st along with numbers, which are critical, because those are the numbers that are based on our statewide funding. But I want, what I want to do periodically is come back to the committee and share this data throughout the course of the school year. So in your, in your packet or on your Chromebook, you have the enrollment census signer report, which is a snapshot which was taken on December 1st. And what, what you basically are looking at, for, for those of you who have never seen this before, is it, it takes all of our groups, the total number of students in the district, breaks it down by the enrollment type, which means they're, they're enrolled within the schools or they're, or they're enrolled in out-of-district placement, resident community, the gender, the number of male versus female students. We have their race and ethnicity based on, this is all based on a number, not a percentage. The lunch, which is free and reduced, which is unfortunately 75% of our students are, are free and reduced lunch here in Wausau. The number of students who are, have an IEP, number of students who are receiving accommodations through Section 504 plans. It lists the number of our students who are limited English proficiency, our RDSL students, the number of students who are immigrants that are in our district, homeless students, which that's one which I think will unfortunately catch your eye based on the number of 124 students that we have in our district that are considered to be homeless. And then at the bottom, there's, there's the new, there's the race, ethnicity has changed, ride changed, the, the way that's captured. So that is the, is the new and updated numbers for race and ethnicity, which is some of the things that I want to bring to your attention. And what I like to do is I like to compare year to year, although sometimes it's, it's not a completely accurate snapshot, but I'm going to take your attention to the enrollment type, enrolled in public school. We have 5,900 students currently that are enrolled in the district. Now, those are students that are in the district. That does not include the number of students that are, that are Wausau students, but they're enrolled in out-of-district setting. Public school, we have 153, as, as I said earlier, Mrs. Nato, you had the question about number of out-of-districts. We have 153 students that are in out-of-district placements currently. So if you look at comparing years, so that the last, if you go all the way to the right, that last column on the right, that's 2016-17. So it compares between last year, 1718, and then 1617. So if you look at, at our enrollment numbers, our enrollment has, has increased. Now, it's increased drastically last year, this year, by 271 students. I'm not so sure that that's completely accurate. We know that our data for this year is, is completely accurate. Last year, at this time, between that point to the end of the school year, we did a lot of work, our data clerk did a lot of work with respect to sort of making sure that data was accurate, the data that we're, that we put in to our student information platform that then goes to the Department of Education. We've done a much better job of that since, I would say, March of last, of last spring to now. So it, it, we're two, it says 271, we're probably not 271. We probably don't have a 271 student increase. However, we do have, have a, I, I would think that's a pretty, pretty hefty increase from, you know, from last year. So... So, but as we move forward, we're gonna, I think, based on the better job that we're doing with collecting data and submitting that data to RIDE, I think it's gonna be more of an apples-to-apples comparison than it has been in the past.
Dr. McGee, I want to just note that when you look at the students with IEPs and 504s, 1619 and 68, nearly 1,700 students, it's about 26.7% of our total enrollment, which is a very, very sizable group. And there's no surprise why we have a high level of district costs, transportation costs, even though we bring some of those down, there's always folks, like you said, Mr. Perrier, that can enter the district at any time, that he had special needs. And it's something that we're, this community, this district will always be dealing with. Are there any other comments in the superintendent's report?
I just have a question.
Mrs. Nada.
That increase, was it at the elementary level, greatest increase?
So, I don't have that data right here tonight. I could sort of drill down into that to try to find out where, but my guess is probably sprinkled across the district. You know, one of the things that we can do is, we can look at, we have the ability to look at what's the enrollment by school and by grade, so we could actually take that snapshot from, you know, last December 1st, and hear that to this December 1st, would give us a much clearer view of where exactly those numbers are coming from.
All right, thanks.
Maybe we could have that comparison that'll mix me in, just to take a good look at it, since we're dealing with these numbers now. And I think it's a good idea to look at it also by school. Okay. Any other comments, the special members? Have none, I have a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Motion. Motion made by Mrs. Kapiskas, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Capwell. All in favor, roll call, is it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, we have school committee good welfare, and what we do at this point, usually at this point in meeting, for each member of the school committee, has an opportunity to not just speak their mind, but say good things about the community, or maybe have lingering questions or comments about what's happening. For me tonight, it's just, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to you, and to your families, to all our listening audience. Hopefully, this next calendar year is a good one for all of us, for all of you, and that we stay healthy and happy. Vice Chair Burke?
Thank you, Chairman Bujay. First of all, you know, it's just been a year ago, since my three-year appointment to the appointed school committee ended. And then at that time, I was not reappointed to at that time, the appointed school committee. But also at that time, many people were kind of like clamoring that I be appointed and put back on the school committee. Well, here I am. And I want to thank those people who started that voice way back in January, and also the people who then continued that voice and continued the citizens of the voters of Wunsakit, who did vote me back onto the school committee, I do appreciate that. I believe I was doing a good job, I will continue to do that job and better. And I want to say that my agenda still remains the same, to enhance the education and the wellbeing of the students of Wunsakit. And with that in mind, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Miss Capwell.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to reiterate what a lot of us have been saying, that we got a lot of excitement up here for this new school committee. I've had the chance to meet one-on-one with a number of you, and I'm looking forward to meeting more in depth with the others as well, so, thank you. In continuing with things, I'd like to extend heartfelt thanks. This past week, I was able to tour a number of our schools. So, thank you Superintendent McGee and Chief Technology Officer, Nettorianni. Thank you, Kim, for setting it up for us. And very much so, thank you to Bill Webb, to the principal at Vernon Elementary School, Robert DeRozers, and at Wunsakit High School, Carnell Henderson. And most importantly, thank you to the teachers and students that allowed us to enter into their classrooms, and they were able to educate us on their latest and greatest accomplishments. It was a wonderful morning for me, and I'm looking forward to going to the remainder of the schools early in the new year. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo a lot of what Mr. Burke said, I'd like to thank everyone for their support, who placed us up here on this diet. We're all excited, nervous, but happy to be here, and we intend to do our very best for our students and our staff. So I'll start by saying, because I'll forget otherwise, I wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. But I do have some other things I wanted to say. One of them is, I want to piggyback on Mr. Burke, earlier I was at the holiday concert at Wunsakit High School, it was wonderful. My daughters and alumni in the band, they have a chorus, so I try to attend all of them. And as usual, as Mr. Burke indicated, there are always some surprises they pull out, particularly the percussion group, it was very exciting, I thought, last Thursday, but it was very exciting to hear that concert. I also like to say that I'm on Facebook, a lot of people know I'm on Facebook, and I'm enjoying very much seeing the pictures being posted with regard to Spirit Week in all our schools. And some might say, what's the importance of this? Why are we wasting time in Spirit Week? You know what? It makes people happy, it drives kids to go to school, that's very important to keep kids involved, interested in coming, and all of those activities aid in that, and we have a real problem with that in this district. So I love seeing those photographs of kids in those theragogy sweaters, and teachers too. And they're enjoyable to see, and they're heartwarming, and I appreciate it, so please keep posting away. One last thing that also impacts our students, in a direct way, but not to the school department, the Lions Club, which took over the milk fund, I was in the J C's for many years and was very part, very much a part of the milk fund. They are having a special drive on Saturday, where they are having essentially a toll road off the road, so they don't need city council approval, and they're not gonna put anybody's life in danger. It's gonna be at the former Citizens Bank Building, or so we'll just, you know, where is the former Market Credit Union, where they're gonna be positioning themselves to collect funds for the milk fund at the former drive-through windows for the bank. And for your donation, you will get milk and cookies. So I hope all of you will take time out of your day on Saturday to take a swing by, make a donation, enjoy some milk and cookies, and help some of our students who might not otherwise have milk without your donation. Again, happy holidays to everyone, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Nada.
Hi. First of all, I'm happy to be back, and it seems like I never left. And I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. My wish for the new year is that we have peace and stability returned to the Wunsakit Education Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nada. This time, I'd like a motion to convene in closed session at 8:17 PM for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining negotiations according with Rhode Island General Laws
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bujay.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Nada.
Yes.